Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 14th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Education in our district, School District 25. I call a meeting to a purpose. This is a right, and we just called it.
Olenecha?
Here.
Niorman?
Here.
Scott Bellato?
Here.
Joby?
Here.
Serenilia?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Spas.
Here.
And the first order of business tonight is the public hearing on the 2023-24 amended budget. The amended budget was presented at the April meeting and was posted on our website. Is anyone here to speak as a part of the public hearing on the amended budget? Seeing no comments, I will close the meeting at this time. Now we can move on to our regular meeting agenda. And before we begin, I'd like to share with our audience that our meetings are when the school board conducts its business, and they are open to the public. Because we are an elected governmental body, we can only take action by majority vote in a public meeting like this one. We welcome the public to listen and observe, and we have a community input section on the agenda if you have questions or comments to the business of the board. So if you would please stand if you are able for the pleasure of allegiance. Well, the first item on our agenda for the regular meeting is our recognitions and presentations, and we have many things to celebrate here in District 25. First, we would like to recognize the Science Olympia teams from South and Thomas Middle Schools for their success in the Science Olympia competitions this year. Dr. Vine, I'll turn it over to you to begin that recognition.
Thank you. You probably hear the beautiful jingling of medals. As we sit here, we're so proud of our students and their hard work in the Science Olympia. But first, I'd like to acknowledge our coaches. It takes many coaches and volunteers every year to make Science Olympia a success. So if you are a coach of Science Olympia, would you please stand? Thank you. And I think we have some presentations. The first one that you'll see on the screen is behind you. I'm sorry for our guests. You'll see a presentation about South Middle School's Science Olympia team.
That's it. That's it.
Now we'd like to call our coaches from South Middle School up, and they will introduce each of our South Middle School students. And I asked our board president and board vice president if you would distribute the small token of appreciation from the board. So students, when you do hear your name, please come up. The board has a small token of congratulations and appreciation for you. And then we would ask you to go meet Dr. Harris over by the blue wall. I think he will take the South Middle School picture. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Brucic. Okay, just here, on the South varsity team, we have Maura, Emma, Tyler, Will, Boy, Nuhak, Kel, Tyler, Tyler, Ethan, Devon, Elliot, Henry, Mae. On our junior varsity team, Charlie, Jonathan, Cam, Amira, Nathan, Amhar, Dick, Claudio, Parker, Tyler, Peyton, Jack, Dia, Jan. Any South Middle School parents that also want to get a picture, you're welcome to come up and do that at this time. Any South parents who want to take a picture, feel free to come on up. All of that jingling, the sound of success. Congratulations, South middle.
Charlie, Charlie, we're so lucky.
And now I believe we have a presentation on the screen about our Thomas Middle School Science Olympia team.
All right, and to continue, Carol. Up first, I have Krisha, Sophia, Neha, Colton, Cassandra, Brandon, Nan, Matthew, Emily, Swarnadu, Haritha, Ramon, Benjamin, Peter, Ashrita, Porevi, Ronan, Ben, Kadu, Alex, Allison, Abhi, Archie, Sophia, Carson, Francesca, Alessandra, Luca, Nathan, Krishna, Gavin, Wyatt, and Al.
Thomas Middle School parents, they'll be able to come up and take a picture.
Congratulations again to all our Science Olympia teams. Let's give it up one more time.
I asked when we made the state board, and I'm on my way out the door, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank this board and your representative, all the school boards, that have been here since I've been here. And I want to thank you specifically for your support of Science Olympia. I've been involved with Science Olympia for 25 years, and I started a team in my prior district. And when I came here, it was one of the things I really was hesitant about giving up. And I'll never forget this. I was walking down the main hall of Thomas. It was one of those days right before school started. We're all in our grungy clothes, and I see this guy with glasses coming down the hall. He's got a vintage Science Olympia shirt on, and it may even have a few holes in it. But I started talking to him. I said, "Oh, you guys do Science Olympia here." And as I started talking, I used my lab in my old school for building events. And as I'm talking to him, his eyes are getting bigger and bigger. I didn't know it at that moment that I was talking to the guy who started Illinois Science Olympia, John Vigil, who's here. In the moments of the season, we don't realize what it leads to, the support of Science Olympia. And I use a lot of quotes, and I have a quote on a poster hanging in my classroom. It is difficult to say what is possible. For the dreams of yesterday are the hopes of today and realities of tomorrow. Whatever our most perplexing hopes are today, be it the cure for cancer or infectious disease or landing first humans on Mars, I firmly believe that the potential for those to become realities of tomorrow is sitting in a classroom somewhere, ideally in a District 25 classroom. But the more things like Science Olympia that we as educators encourage students to do, where we help them achieve a level of success and help them seek out the next one and the next one and the next one after that, the more we increase the likelihood that those hopes of today will be become realities of tomorrow. And one more quote. It's one of my favorite quotes through my whole career, and it's, "The mind is not a vessel to be filled, but a fire to be lighted." And your support of STEM and Science Olympia in our district has allowed my Science Olympia colleagues and I to light many, many fires in these wonderful kids back here. So thank you.
So to our coaches and our Science Olympia teams, again, congratulations, and we would love for you to stay. You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to celebrate this moment and, you know, depart, and we congratulate you again. All right, we will continue the celebrations, and we are excited to recognize our district retirees. These staff members, yes. No surprise, these staff members represent years of positive impact on student learning and student growth. We are so grateful to you for your dedication to District 25 and our students, and we're honored to share this special moment with you. You are the reason our district excels and the reason that our schools are such wonderful places to learn. So Dr. Vine, could you lead us through the recognition?
I am happy to talk about retirees. President Scott Bellato, Board Administrator, really excited to share with you these exceptional employees who are here tonight. And Dr. Scott Bellato, who would join me up front.
Just press the button to make sure the green light goes on.
All right, we're going to call up retirees by school. And so first tonight, recognizing retirees from Dryden School, please welcome our principal, Ekemi Sussler.
It is an honor to recognize Dryden Elementary School's Special Education Teaching Assistant, Michelle Shelton, as she retires from District 25. Michelle, we are deeply grateful for your dedication and for touching the lives of countless students and staff over your 16 years at Dryden and in District 25. You have provided so much positive support and so much compassion for the unique needs and abilities of students under your care. Thank you, Michelle, for creating a nurturing environment where students feel safe, valued, and understood. Thank you for helping each student shine and experience success. The positive impacts of your contributions are immeasurable. We wish you a retirement which is relaxing and rewarding, filled with all the things you look forward to and all the happiness that you deserve. Congratulations, Michelle.
Next, on behalf of Olive Mary St. School, these were our principal, Yoren Davis.
Not that tall. Good evening. I have the honor to introduce this phenomenal teacher that is retiring from Olive Mary St., Mrs. Deb Wilson has dedicated 18 years of service to District 25. If you know Mrs. Wilson, you know that she has a love of dogs and the Alaskan I did a rod race. This passion has morphed itself into her very own fourth grade I did-a-challenge that she has organized for our fourth grade students each year. I know that she will definitely be remembered for this incredible experience that our fourth graders get to have, but also her dedication to her students. She works tirelessly to connect with her students and to meet their needs, both academically and emotionally. She pushes her students to be their best selves, challenging them to tackle tasks not only because she believes in them, but because she wants them to believe in themselves. One thing that I will always remember hearing is your term of endearment, sweets, that she uses when encouraging anyone and everyone that comes into her path. So with that, sweets, we hope you enjoy your retirement.
Yeah, I'm from Patton School, Principal Ellie Chen.
I have the honor of recognizing three amazing educators from Patton School. The first is Jeanne McLuhan. I've often wondered how long it takes to really do it all, and I now know that the answer to that question is 34 years, the length of Jeanne McLuhan's teaching career. During her teaching tenure, Jeanne has taught almost every single grade level available as a classroom teacher: kindergarten, second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. She filled in the remaining grades and added on the job of supporting staff in her role as a student learning coach. Jeanne really has done it all, and she doesn't even look tired. She strikes each day at school with a smile and well wishes for everyone, just as any true coach would. And her energy and enthusiasm does not wane as the day goes on, as evidenced here tonight. Earlier in the reception, someone said that Jeanne described herself as being naturally caffeinated, and it's so true. Jeanne, the game is changing for you next year, and we know you'll be spending a lot more time on the golf course and doing some fun travels, but kids will still be looking for you and for their stickers. You've helped motivate and celebrate students and encouraged them to try new things and take on new challenges. Your time in District 25 and at Patton will always be remembered and celebrated. All the best to you and your retirement. We also have John Donia. John recently shared a story with us about how he came to join District 25 back in 1996. And at that time, the competition to get a job was fierce. It was so fierce, in fact, that he was one of 2,100 applicants for the position of first grade. Clearly, District 25 got it right when they selected John. Patton has grown and flown over the years due to John's time in the classroom and in the gym. While we, of course, feel that John's retirement has been well earned, staff and students are very sad to see him go. And some students even asked if we could just duct tape him to the wall so that he could stay with us. We're not going to lie, we did take a moment to think about how much duct tape would we need to do this. But while we know this won't happen, I am holding out hope because I'm pretty sure I've heard him say in front of other witnesses that he is considering coming back to help with lunch supervision every now and then. That's dedication in all of us too. You will always be welcome to take the mic and share some jokes with our Panthers during lunch. John, when you started in District 25, you were one in 2,100. But as you retire, know that for all of us at Patton and in District 25, you're one in a million. Have a good year. And finally, we have Kathleen Corley. Have you ever had a best friend that you could go to with anything, and you just knew they would drop everything to help you? Kathleen Corley has been that best friend to the Patton staff. Not only does she drop everything to help anyone in need, but she does it with a smile and a sense of warmth that can't help but calm even those who are the most anxious. And let's face it, when it comes to unexpected problems with technology, anxiety can run high. Sure, she's held the formal titles of tech facilitator and LFC teaching assistant for the last 26 years, but it's that best friend status and her ever-present smile that has set her apart. Recently, Kathleen acquired another title, "Pray and Laugh." And as you move into retirement, we know that you will excel in this role, just as you have in all other roles. We wish you all the best in your retirement.
And next up from South Middle School, Dr. Jim Morris.
Judy Frome has been a loyal and dedicated teaching assistant in District 25 for 21 years. She has spent the last 10 years as a South target. Judy works very closely to support our students with disabilities using kindness, empathy, passion. She consistently focuses on what students can do rather than their challenges. Judy has been an asset to the teams along with the staff members she has worked with. She cares about the whole child, academic, social, and emotional, while also doing her best to help students boost their individual potential. In retirement, Judy spends, is planning to spend time with her husband Mike at their family house in the great north woods of Wisconsin, spoiling grass and field, gardening, sewing, and hopefully finding the time to clean your basement. Thank you for all that you've done for the students at South and wish you all the happiness in your retirement. Kind, compassionate, positive, driven, composed, intelligent, determined, sensitive, honest, respectful, impactful, accountable, creative, pain and, um, and effective, are all random and educative. Now combine them together, and it describes a spectacular educator and human being, Mary Beth Collins. Mary Beth has dedicated 37 years of service to being a teacher, 23 years of those being in District 25, with 15 years being at South. She has embraced every child that has joined her classroom using love and patience to ensure that they feel cared for, safe, and successful. I've had the pleasure of visiting Mary Beth's classroom every morning and have been coerced, I mean encouraged, to participate in the daily activities such as exercises, dance time, sharing personal interests, and providing my lunch and weekend interest. That'll be something I will truly miss. Her classroom is always bustling with activities, support, and praise. Mary Beth reminds each of us that it's important to celebrate every success, no matter how large or small. Everyone felt important and valued in her classroom. Upon retiring, Mary Beth and her husband Joe will be traveling to Paris in September. I know she'll find time to visit her granddaughter, Phailyn, in Seattle, and they will be, oh, they will be attending every Notre Dame football game she can, since her son is one of the coaches now. And finally, I'm sure Mary Beth will continue to work with the Child's Research Triangle Organization and Jerry's Cafe. Mary Beth, we will miss you tremendously at South and wish you all the happiness and relaxation during your retirement. Mary Beth, we will miss you tremendously at South and wish you all the happiness and relaxation during your retirement.
Please welcome our principal from Thomas Mills School, Lori Allen.
It is with great pride that I share gratitude to three very special members of our Wolf Pack. Come on over. Diana, come on over. We're gonna start review. Diana is one of a kind. After twenty-seven years in District Twenty-Five, we are thrilled for her to start her retirement adventure. Diana has not only supported her students, entertained her colleagues, but she has kept all of the plants in her office alive and thriving. Diana has a tremendous sense of humor, and she is a pillar of strength not only for our Wolf Pack family, but for her parents, her siblings, and her two beloved children, Caitlin and her soon-to-be son-in-law, who are here tonight, her son Michael, and her baby Duncan. We will miss Diana's daily dishes, her fantastic jokes, and all the laughs that she shares with us. We wish you all the warmth and happiness in your retirement, Diana. Maureen McDermott. Maureen joined our Wolf Pack in two thousand and three, but she's been a teacher in the district, in our District Twenty-Five for twenty-five years. She started off in elementary education, but then she made her move to Thomas Middle School, where she has taught English, language arts. Aside from grammar puns, Maureen has enjoyed sponsoring the Journalism Club, Coaching Science Olympia, and she was a longstanding full weaker at TACT. That was a lot. Maureen has served our building as a team leader for seventeen years. And she's made countless contributions to student success. Her lessons and her sense of humor will stick with the students and staff here forever, and we wish her all the best in retirement. We will miss you, Maureen, and we are forever grateful for your time at TMS. Enjoy your grandbabies. All right, Mr. Grant. Mr. Grant has been an educator for thirty years and a Thomas Timb- Timblewolf for twenty-two. He has always been known as a fun and joyful IT and STEM teacher, as well as a beloved Science Olympia coach. Mr. Grant's dedication to his students is unmatched, and his students feel truly blessed to have had him. Some of his students, many of them, have careers in the IT STEM field. Mr. Student, Mr. Grant's students frequently come back and visit him, and they stay in touch with him because of the connections that he creates and for the passion for which he teaches. The students, staff, and parents know that Mr. Grant can be counted on whenever they need someone to lean on. We are thrilled to announce that Mr. Grant is the winner of the 2024 Leroy Dansby Lean On Me Award. We know we can count on you. From Throwback Thursdays to stuff Mr. Grant, we will surely miss his spirit at TMS. I will wrap up with a quote by Mr. Grant: "Simple gifts and education lead to great things." Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Please welcome our principal from Westgate School, Dr. Anne Fox.
I'm dying to know what's in those. All right, we have the proud privilege to recognize four of our staff members who have made incredible contributions to Westgate School. And so I brought with me Eliotra, our assistant principal, and then also Cara Giacomo Ferris, our other assistant principal, because I couldn't do this on my own, so, welcome. The first person that we are going to recognize is Karen Jones. Karen has dedicated an incredible thirty-four years to teaching at Westgate. She began as a resource teacher and then moved to kindergarten. Karen's impact as a teacher and valued Westgate staff member has been nothing short of extraordinary, leaving an indelible mark on the countless lives she has touched throughout her time at Westgate. Karen's classroom has always been a place of warmth, compassion, and unwavering dedication to her students. Karen's philosophy of teaching kindergarten is to take time and create memories. This has made her a beloved figure among students and parents alike. Beyond her role as a teacher, Karen has been a leader among the staff. She can be counted on to provide words of wisdom and have enriched our school community in countless ways. Though she may be retiring from the classroom, Karen's impact will continue to resonate for years to come, serving as a testament to the profound difference one teacher can make in the lives of so many. We are so grateful for all you have done.
Sandy Tatsy. Wouldn't be here without a lipstick in my pocket to put on, without a mirror, because that's Sandy's specialty. Sandy's retirement marks the end of an era filled with thirty-eight years of dedication, passion, and unwavering commitment to students and staff in District Twenty-Five. As a teacher and advocate, a mentor, and a valued team member, Sandy's impact reverberates through every classroom and hallway she's graced. Her versatility has, has, has... Having held numerous roles speaks volumes of her adaptability and her expertise. Beyond her professional prowess, Sandy has been a beacon of style, setting trends effortlessly. But it's her heart for education and her ability to inspire others that has truly defined her legacy. Sandy's guidance has shaped her teammates and touched countless lives. Her actions will be felt deeply, but her influence will endure in the hearts and the minds of all who have had the privilege of working alongside her. As Sandy embarks on this new chapter, may it be filled with the same joy and fulfillment that she's brought to so many throughout her career. Happy retirement, Sandy, and thank you for your thirty-eight incredible years of service.
Ms. Wendy Damley. So Wendy Damley has dedicated thirty-three years to teaching here in District Twenty-Five. Her upbeat spirit, caring nature, and hilarious classroom antics have made her a legend among students and staff alike. Wendy has unwavering commitment to her students, often going above and beyond to see them be successful both in and outside of the classroom. She can often be seen in the office late on Fridays after school, being sure that she has everything that she needs for the next week. Wendy is beloved by her teammates and her colleagues. She's the glue that holds them together, tapping into her sense of humor to make hard days just a little bit lighter. Wendy, you are an amazing teacher who has nurtured, advocated, and inspired every one of your students. So as you embark on the journey of retirement, we are going to miss you dearly. But know that you'll be spreading joy and laughter wherever you go. So here's to the next chapter. May it be filled with as much laughter as your classroom. And last, but definitely not least, we have Carol Mills. I can't look at you guys, I'll start to cry. Carol has dedicated twenty-four years of service to District Twenty-Five. Her vibrant presence in the classroom, especially with our fourth graders, has been nothing short of inspiring. Her boundless energy and infectious enthusiasm have left an indelible mark on countless students who have passed through her doors. Carol's teaching style infused with fun and creativity has made learning an adventure for her students. She radiates positivity and encouragement for her students and her colleagues. The impact of her teaching extends far beyond academic achievements. She has helped shape the character and confidence of her students, preparing them for success in life. Carol's legacy as an educator is one of unwavering dedication, passion, and a genuine love for teaching. As she embarks on this new chapter of her life, may she be showered with the same love and appreciation she has so generously given to her students and colleagues over the years. Here's to Carol Mills, AKA Esmeralda Gloomstein, a truly remarkable teacher, colleague, and friend. Cheers to all the well-deserved retirement filled with endless joy and adventures.
Please welcome our principal from Windsor School, Dr. Dan Zapp.
Tonight I have the honor of speaking about three Windsor retirees. Anna Fergus started working in District Twenty-Five seventeen years ago when her daughter was a first grader at Windsor. During her first ten years, she was in food services, where she primarily worked at Olive and Greenbrier, but had the opportunity to travel to all nine of our elementary and middle schools. For the past seven years, Anna has been a paraprofessional in our primary instructional program at Windsor. Anna was an amazing addition to our Windsor team. Her patience, creativity, and passion for working with students with special needs was apparent each and every day. As Anna transitions into retirement, we will miss her, but not for long, as she plans to continue subbing as a teaching assistant at Windsor. She also looks forward to volunteering at the Arlington Heights Animal Shelter, taking crocheting lessons, volunteering at a wildlife sanctuary in Barrington, and traveling with her family. Congratulations on your retirement, Anna. Karen Kovalin grew up in Arlington Heights and attended Greenbrier School. She began her career in District Twenty-Five as a playground supervisor and then moved to food service. She started as a teaching assistant with an early childhood program for a few years before joining an instructional program where she has been ever since. Karen loves the students and is very patient, kind, and caring. Her favorite thing is watching students grow. Even the baby steps our students make are very important to her. She has been amazing working with some of our most challenging students. When not in school, Karen enjoys spending time walking and being with her five grandchildren. Karen will be relaxing and spending time with her husband and family, traveling, and hopefully subbing on occasion with us during retirement. Congratulations. Ken Brogny started in District Twenty-Five in two thousand as a third-grade teacher, then moved his way to fifth grade for several years before finally landing in fourth grade, where he finished his teaching career. He worked as part of many teams over the years with colleagues that had become friends and touched the lives of countless students. Ken's many outside interests were always incorporated into his classroom, making him a favorite among so many students. Windsor cannot think of Star Wars without thinking of Mr. Brogny. May the Fourth will never be the same at Windsor School. Ken was always a team player. His love for cooking was known amongst staff at Windsor. He was the winner of the Chili Cook-Off on more than one occasion. And during COVID, he was known to deliver treats to his teammates' stores at home to keep their spirits lifted. If there was an occasion to cook and show off culinary skills, Ken was sure to participate, and everyone enjoyed his enthusiasm. The halls will not be the same without his famous whistle, Star Wars music whacking from his classroom, his amazing treats, and his connection with kids and colleagues. We wish him well in his many travels and adventures and look forward to treats delivered to the front office with his newfound extra time in retirement and subbing. Congratulations.
And we have several presenters for retirees from the Duff Administration Building, so please welcome Sam Boss, Brian Phillips, Steve Adams, and Rick Cuthbert.
Good evening. Only a handful of staff at the district have had the honor of nourishing our children daily. Tonight, I have the honor of thanking two very special people. Behind the scenes, they gave a hundred percent of their time and effort to make the school lunch experience, here in our district, a great one for our students. Chris has worked many, she worked many years serving the children at Westgate, and then headed the Duff to support the department at the district level. Her creativity and positive impact on our programs, whether it was creating new recipes, developing marketing materials, she was a Canva expert, or simply making our lines pretty, made our department even better than it was. Her attention to detail was so important that it made everything run so efficiently and smoothly. She played a big role in supporting our staff daily and making sure they had all the tools for success. for success. On a personal note, her sense of humor and wit kept us on our toes and always laughing in the office. Whether she was diagnosing a medical ailment, being an investigator, or whether I was trying to break her secret vault of passwords, sorry tech, wherever you are, she was always our resident problem solver. Thank you, Chris, for the many, many years of dedication to the district and for continuing to support us even as a sub after her retirement. We are so very grateful for you. Eileen Ackerman spent 25 years at the district. Started her time at Patton, see, I'm doing a fact check, before coming over to Dunton as the administrative assistant for our department. She was an, she is an extremely dedicated and reliable member of our Food, Nutrition, and Services team. Eileen was always willing to jump in and do whatever it took to make our operations run smoothly and successfully. Eileen is an amazing listener and took the time to support our staff when they needed her and talked with our parents regularly about our programs. Eileen truly embodies the word community, from being part of our community to serving our community daily. She never missed an event that helped serve the greater good of what we did here, which was defeat our children. She has the great ability to think of the big picture and played a critical role in the success of all that our department has accomplished. I came back to the district two and a half years ago, and I knew I was walking back into a district that had a quality-run program, and much of that is thanks to Eileen and her many years of dedication. Thank you to my friend Eileen for all your support throughout the years, and we wish you only the best in your retirement.
Tonight, I have the bittersweet task of celebrating Julie Mendelke, a pillar of the District 25 Facility Management Team. Julie and I began our District 25 journey together, but while I'll have to wait a few more years for retirement, I'm thrilled that we could celebrate her remarkable contributions tonight. Julie has managed facilities, inspections, budget reports, invoices, payroll, vendors, all the smile, and often to the tune of the latest hits from her afternoon B-96 ticketing. Her beautiful spirit and energy have kept us all feeling more young and hip. If you're not aware, so maybe, Julie is a master of conversations, always sharing stories with our babies about her family gatherings, trips with the grandchildren, musical events, and get-togethers with friends. I hope her retirement story will hold much stronger than that time your car was stolen and more about the joyful family adventures. Much of Julie's success in the facility department can be traced back to her invaluable experience raising her wonderful sons, who are here tonight, and the support of her loving family. Managing our department, which at times can feel like overseeing a lively group of 50, Julie is always handled with humor and wit, making every interaction enjoyable. Julie, your grace and compassion have made you irreplaceable in the department. As you move on in this next exciting chapter of your life, know that the mark you left at District 25 is undeniable. We hope that your retirement is filled with as much joy and adventure as you've likely
For our next and final graduate of the evening, Dr. Lori Vine, I'm going to share the podium with Stacy Malick. To start, I thought I'd share what our board policy says about the superintendent position. Under Board Policy 3:40, Superintendent, it says, "The superintendent is the district's executive officer and is responsible for the administration and management of the district's schools in accordance with the Board of Education policies and directives in state and federal law." Though that description is accurate and important, it doesn't begin to describe how the work of a superintendent shapes a school district, any more than two cocoa biscuits with a fond of filling can convey why your cookies are so awesome. When I was talking to board colleagues and others about Dr. Vine and her time in District 25, a number of words rose to the top, words like "student-centered," "dedicated," and "accessible." There were three words, however, that truly captured the essence of Dr. Vine's work here in the district, the big three, if you will. First, Dr. Vine's work is impactful. She has continually ensured that support and resources are in place for exemplary athletic, arts, and academic programs, and as adapted as the needs of our students and community have shifted over the years. Second, Dr. Vine is inspirational. She has challenged our staff to learn and grow and enjoy them on their journey, leading or supporting, co-teaching or cheering on as needed, and modeling personal growth in her own daily work. And finally, Dr. Vine is authentic. She is always present for students, staff, and community. She thrives in one-on-one settings, devoting the time and energy and space to give each individual the opportunity to voice their needs. She unfailingly treats others with dignity and respect. She builds connections to empower others to do their best. And when asked about her successes, she shares the stories of those around her, lifting them up, highlighting their efforts and impact. So pause and reflect with me. Think for a moment, from your personal perspective, on what makes District 25 so special? Whether a board member, a student, parent, support staff, administrator, or teacher, we all have a story about our time in District 25. And you see, Dr. Vine's story is our story. Our challenges overcome, our celebrations, our growth and learning are becoming the best versions of ourselves. Dr. Vine is impactful, inspirational, and authentic to all of us, each in our own way. Her legacy will be with us for years to come because of the lives she has impacted during her tenure. The change and growth and learning she has inspired will shape our efforts as we move forward, long after she has stepped away. And all of this will last because Lori has led us from an authentic place of empathy and compassion that puts us at the center of the story. In District 25, we have a hashtag we use on social media and other places, #D25It'sPersonal. But it's so much more than a hashtag, and nobody understands this better than Dr. Vine, or lives this more fully than she does. And I think you'll see what I mean as Stacy shares her comments.
What would you do if you weren't afraid? That was a question Lori that you posed to us. On opening day of the 2014-15 school year, you shared that while you wore the title superintendent, and that we all likely saw you as the boss that can fire me, that you didn't want us to be afraid, to do the job you were hired to do, to have the courage to speak up, to share our thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and to challenge you. Why? Because in order for us to grow and learn together, fear cannot be a factor. You urged us not to cower in the face of our, cower in the face of our duties, but rather embrace them boldly. You invited us to voice our thoughts and our dreams, even if they challenged your own. For in that exchange of ideas lay the seeds of growth and enlightenment, a truth you embodied with every fiber of your being. Lori cultivated an environment of warmth and inclusivity where every voice found a receptive ear. Whether or not you concurred with her decisions, she unfailingly lent an ear to your concerns, to our concerns. Lori, in addition to all you've accomplished on behalf of the District 25 community, thank you for your random thoughts. Thank you for books with fun, 174 classrooms in 174 days, and even simply your excitement over the Cubs winning the World Series. Lori, we thank you for your unwavering dedication to the District 25 community, your compassionate leadership, and the indelible heart you have left upon our lives. Please know that as you near the completion of the final leg of your journey with us, your legacy will live on in the hearts and minds of all those whose lives you have touched. Thank you, Lori, for teaching us to not be afraid.
I think there's some other celebrations you might have in mind, but Dr. Vine, you do
I have a quick update, Mr. President. I had the honor of attending the Westgate Blues that happened on Friday evening. It was a really beautiful evening, and, you know, was so grateful to see the PTA hard at work and so many volunteers from the Westgate community, and service hundreds of kids with the balloon van and that Kona Ice and the popcorn. So it was just a really nice event, and it was an honor to be there.
Sure, Mr. President. In the past couple of weeks, I've seen the middle school kids really shine. I was here facing that way to see the Addams Family musical, which was amazing. They have such talented kids, so brave. And then I also was able to attend the sectional track meet, and I saw the South and Thomas Matthews running so fast, so determined, very inspirational. Yes, it was fun to see all the middle school kids.
Thank you, Liz. Any others?
Mr. President, I forgot one thing. Mr. President reminded me, which is talking about the runners, the absence of Patton event, and it was a rainy day, but huge attendance by the Patton community as their fundraiser for Make-A-Wish Foundation. It was really great to see, and all the teachers were out there, the community members, the fire department and so forth, so it was really great to see that community as well.
And a former board member as well. Scott Philofike was there.
Former board member was there, and I got to see my friend Greg as well.
Okay, thank you. We're ready to move to Edred with Kevin Michael and Stacy Malick for board access.
There was no member meeting in May for Edred, who's a ramp-up of the legislative session, so nothing new to report, but we'll have probably plenty to
Okay, thank you. We're ready to move to Edred with Kevin Michael and Stacy Malfor.
There was no member meeting in May for Edred to do the ramp-up of the legislative session, so nothing new to report, but we'll have probably plenty to hear.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. And going to IASB. Any other meeting this month?
No, nothing this month.
Okay. All right. And then to NSSEO, and that's Liz, please.
Yes, so, starting next year, NSSEO is bringing back their Bright Spots program. And what this means is they're going to be interviewing anyone from their members, so many board members who might want to go into maybe NSSEO's schools for tours, to volunteer, to read to students. It's a really great opportunity for us to kind of see what's going on in those buildings. I will report more probably next year if the year is going to be scheduled, and hopefully some of us can get in there. NSSEO is also starting a strategic planning process, which is going to be very exciting. I'll be reporting on that as it happens. And they're busy with planning and prepping for proms and graduations and all the fun stuff that we are here at District 25 for.
Thank you, Liz. Now is the time on our agenda to set aside for community input. If a member of the public wishes to address any item on tonight's agenda, please complete one of the blue forms provided on the table outside and hand the card to Lana Abra- Abra Bryant. Please note under card if you wish to speak now at the first community input, or if you wish to speak later, should we have a second community input opportunity. We do have a blue slip, so I will read our statement before we continue. And the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. Public input can be helpful to the board as we strive to make the best decisions for the district. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and operate its meeting in a spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to adhere to the following guidelines. Number one, address the board only in the time provided on the agenda, and only after being recognized by the board president. Two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allotted time in order to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. And three, please be respectful and courteous. Board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen attentively and appreciate the input from our community. As always, if you have included your email on the form, somebody will get back to you regarding questions and concerns. So our first public comment is from Erin Whitworth. You can come on up to the table.
Thank you. My name is Erin Whitworth, and I am the parent of a current first grader at Olive Mary St. A kindergarten that started in the fall first time, and a third that will be following two years later. I am here today just with a comment on the 2025 school calendar with the delayed start that was approved at the prior board meeting. It's leaving now about 13 days gap between camp ending and the beginning of school starting. This decision has put all working families in a bind. These families, including my own, where both parents work, cannot afford to take the additional week or more off on top of the time that we're already taking during the school year. I did email my concerns to the board when it was first approved, but received confirmation a few weeks ago from Dr. Byd that they were unable to find any community partners to offer care for those weeks. While I appreciate the effort and following up with me, it only highlights the lack of options working families like mine have to fill that gap in time. While I'm sure the decision to change the calendar was one that was thoughtfully considered from all angles, and I know was centered around the all-day kindergarten that I am utilizing next year, it is putting additional stress on families. Part of what makes the school district great is that it includes all different types of families. By moving out the start without a plan to support two-parent working families, it's not considering a large portion of your population. Not only will the parents suffer here as we scramble to find care for this interim period, but our children will also suffer as they will be without the structure and enrichment they need in those last weeks before the start of the year. I just ask in the future, do you consider the impact of these decisions very carefully on what they do to all families, both parents and children? Thank you for your time and all you do to make District 25 the amazing school district it is. I'm a District 25 graduate, so I truly do understand and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitworth. All right. And now for our communications from District Parker. So, Dr. Byd, do we have a PTA report this evening?
We do not this evening.
Okay. So we'll go to ABC 25 and Gina Fossil, please.
Thank you. So ABC 25 is really busy, getting ready for our fundraiser. And so for anybody who's watching or who is still with us this evening, we are looking for volunteers. We have a wonderful dump thing, Brian, I haven't given up on you yet. And we have various mascots that would be coming and participating in really funny events from all the different schools, as well as many activities. And it should be a really great time because this is in place of our race. And we will be having lots of refreshments, of course, and we'll be feeding people. And it will be held here at South, and we're very much looking forward to it. We do have a plan in case of race as well, so it will be held on June 1st, so come celebrate the end of the school year with us. In addition, please remember during registration for all families to consider joining the ABC 25 community. Your donation gets, 100% of your donation goes back to our wonderful educators and what they want to do to inspire learning within their classrooms.
Thank you, Gina. All right. And we move to ATA, and welcome Allison Berg through the mic. Welcome, Allison.
Thanks. It's going to be tricky because I can't see the slide. Let's see if I can. Okay. All right. Here we go. The Dr. Byd edition of Oh, the Places You'll Go, in honor of your retirement. So congratulations. Today is your day. You're off to retirement. You're off and away. You have brains in your head. You have feet in your shoes. You can steer yourself in that cute red pickup in any direction you choose. You'll look up and down streets, look them over with care. You can think about running, or walking, or even just loitering there. It may be 8:00 AM or 10:00 in the morn. It won't matter when you head out, since sleeping in will be your new norm. With your head full of brains and your shoes full of feet, you might decide to skip the run altogether and find some friends you can meet. You can think about travel, and you should dream big. You can practice beach laying, hiking, mountain climbing, or maybe just taking in scenery this morning or gig. Staying out late, long weekends, or taking a personal day attached to a holiday is no longer your worry. You're retired now, so there's no need to hurry. Maybe sitting at home is more your thing. You can think random thoughts, and ignore that cellphone ding. No calls to make about bad weather or impending doom. Only carefree and light decisions will loom. Like, should you go out to eat, or will you order in? Should you binge-watch a TV series or eat some Oreos? Or maybe visit your kin. Oh, the places you'll go. Dr. Byd, you're on your way out. You'll be seeing great sights. You'll join the high flyers from soar to high heights. We will remember all you have done for District 25, and each one of us. You have steered our district to new waters, all while telling us to breathe and not fuss. You told us to be brave, to not act from fear, to take risks, and reminded us why we are here. Just like us, you are a teacher to start, and making a difference in the lives of kids is what we all have at heart. Your leadership here will not be forgotten anytime soon. Hopefully, you'll be back fondly on us and enjoy a retirement beverage at noon. So, be your name, Bock, Somer, Bixby, or Bray, or Mordecai, Al, Van Allen, O'Shea. You're off to great places. Today is your day. Your villa in Italy is waiting, so get on your way. On behalf of the Arlington Teachers Association, we want to thank you for your leadership and congratulate you on retirement. We wish you well. Nothing but the best.
Thank you so much, Allison.
All right. Our next agenda item is the Consent Agenda, which is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the Consent Agenda as follows. A, Personnel Report and Addendum to Personnel Report. B, Treasurers' Reports. C, Invoices. D, Fixed Asset Disposal Reports. E, Regular and Closed Session Meeting Minutes of February 9th to 2024.
Thank you, Kevin. And Kevin, a second, please. Thank you, Anisha. Lana, if you could please call it.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Alato?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Sure.
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Olanicha?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. And now, Dr. K would like to introduce the new administrator.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to just take a moment to introduce you to Jeremy Fisher. He is now our newest Assistant Principal at Thomas Middle School, and he will be doing a very unique position. He is filling the .5 that is left over from Nick Filipowski's position, and he's going to join the ATA ranks at the same time. So a combination administrator and ATA member. We are very excited to steal him from our friends at Lake Forest. So Jeff McHugh, if you're watching, thank you for the gift of Jeremy Fisher. Welcome, Jeremy. On behalf of the district and your colleagues in administration and the ATA, we present you with a small token of appreciation. And Jeremy has reduced his commute because he's also a parent here in District 25. So we are very happy to have you here, Jeremy. Welcome. Dr. Harris, will you get a photo?
I'd like to.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. K, and welcome, Jeremy. All right. We will move to the Student Learning section of the agenda, and we have an action item, the Elementary Literacy Curriculum Adoption. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the Elementary Literacy Curriculum Adoption as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anisha. Dr. Fitzpatrick, do you have anything to add from your report that you shared on April 19?
I have no new information to share at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And Board members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Scott Alato?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Olanicha?
I struggle to support a program. I don't have objectives for results measured involved. We talked about it before. I don't know what to tell you.
Nierman?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries six one. And thank you, Dr. Fitzpatrick. Moving to the Business and Finance section of the agenda, we do have a number of action items for the board this evening. The first action item is the Bid Award for Furniture Purchased with IDA Granted Funds. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education award the bid for furniture to be funded through the IDA grant funds to Frank Cooney in the amount of $123,658.36.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anisha. Stacy, could you please provide the information on the furniture?
Yes. So, as I indicated in the memoring of the board, this is part of the 1.6 million plan that the board approved. But because we're using federal IDA funds, there are very specific legal requirements on purchasing these types of items. We don't typically use grant funds to buy furniture. So just to ensure we cross our t's and dot our i's, we put this lot out to bid. But it's already part of that plan. It's not on top of that plan. And Cooney came in significantly less, which, again, is why they have the IDA program as well.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the board for Stacy on that? Okay. Seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Joey?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Olanicha?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Alato?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. We'll continue with an
action item for the 2024-2025 Consolidated District Plan. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Kevin. Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the Consolidated District Plan for fiscal year 2024-2025 as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anisha. Stacy, if you could review the 2024-2025 Consolidated District Plan. Information from the board.
Yes, the consolidated plan is a summary of all of the federal grant programs that the district has funds that we are entitled through. We are not making, we haven't made any significant changes to the way we spend the funds in any of the individual grants. We did learn literally a couple days ago that if that's the case, we can go one year without revising the plan and start bringing it every other year as long as there's no significant changes. But because we already had it on the agenda, we figure we'll go ahead and have you vote on this one, and then maybe next year, again, assuming there's no significant changes, we take a year off.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. Does the board have any questions or comments on the plan for Stacy? Okay. Seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Olanicha?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Alato?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. The next action item is the Bid Award for Equipment Used in the Food and Nutrition Services Department. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education award the bid for food service equipment to Velter for $218,458.41.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anisha. And welcome to our Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Sandy Boss. Sandy, if you would please review that information about the bid award for the board.
Sure. So when we're offering federal meal programs, we're required to formally procure equipment over $25,000. So bids were solicited for food serving equipment at Patton as part of the new renovation space for the kitchen area, as well as food preparation and transport equipment for South and Thomas Middle Schools. We received two bids from Velter and Trimer, and Velter is the awarded bidder.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. And so, any questions from the board? Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Fossil?
Yes.
Olanicha?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Alato?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. Our next action item is for the, and thank you, Sandy. Our next action item is for the 2023-24 Amended Budget. As a reminder, the amended budget was presented to the board in April, and we hope it required public hearing earlier this evening. So can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education adopt the 2023-2024 Amended Budget as presented.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Anisha. Stacy, any changes since you presented this information after April 8?
Yes.
Okay. And any questions or comments from the board on the amended budget? Okay. Seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Fossil?
Yes.
Olanicha?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Alato?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Dear Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. We will be postponing the copy paper bid agenda item until June 11th or evening. So our file action item under the Business as well as the 2024-2025 NSSEO budget. So with that, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the NSSEO amended budget for 2023-2024 and the NSSEO budget for 2024-2025.
He does, okay. Okay, thank you. The motion is correct. Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Vine. So a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Liz. So Stacy, if you could please review the NSSEO budget information for the Board.
Yes, for the 24-25 school year, we do, and the time the budget was prepared, have 36 students that we anticipate will be enrolled in NSSEO programs next year. So as I always do, this budget includes four tuition costs for students that may move in, whether it be, you know, right away at the beginning of the school year or throughout the year next year. If we don't spend those dollars, those dollars stay in our reserves. We don't reallocate them otherwise. NSSEO tuition costs increase from 3.5% to 3.65%. So based on that, for actually for our NSSEO tuition, it's going to be pretty equivalent to what we ended up paying this year because, again, this year, we didn't see all of those contingency students, I would say, enroll. We do, however, see, while this is an NSSEO budget item, I always like to show you the total tuition cost because we have tuition kits that attend outside of NSSEO. We do expect a slight increase in that budget just based on student placements for next year. But overall, the budget impact for total tuition costs is an increase over this year of about $80,000. But we do expect an increase also in our IDA revenue funds of about $72,000. So net, about an $8,000 difference from the current year budget.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the Board for Stacy on the budget items? Seeing none, Lana, if you could please call a vote.
Olon, oh, sorry. Nierman?
Yes.
Scappalotto?
Yes.
Jovi?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olonicha?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries seven zero. And thank you, Stacy, for that information. And we're now going to move to our Personnel and Planning section of the Agenda. We have an action item for the 2024 through 2025 Employee Compensation. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2024-2025 Employee Compensation for current teacher assistants, building support technicians, registered nurses, educational support personnel, individuals classified as other, food service, and administrators as submitted.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Anisha. Welcome again, Dr. Kay. If you could please review the 2024-25 Employee Compensation information for the Board.
Yes, thank you. This evening, I am presenting a recommendation to increase the employee compensation for the following groups: teaching assistants, building support technicians, the registered nurses, educational support personnel, individuals classified as other, food and nutrition services, and administrators. The salary increases I am recommending to the Board for these employees are based on a 3.4% Consumer Price Index, unless otherwise noted. All of the projected costs reflect known staffing changes and retirements. I recommend a salary adjustment based on market comparatives for the registered nurse group of employees. These increases are intended to support Arlington High School District 25 in retaining, developing, and attracting high-quality employees. We seek to remain competitive with our surrounding school districts to attract and retain high-quality staff. The recommended salary increase for all of these groups combined compared to this year is 3.17 increase, percent increase, staying below the CPI of 3.4% because of staffing changes and retirements. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2024-2025 Employee Compensation for these current employee groups. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Kay. And yes, any questions from the Board for Dr. Kay on this item? Okay, so seeing no questions, Lana, if you could please call a vote.
Scappalotto?
Yes.
Jovi?
Yes.
Sir Niglio?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olonicha?
Consistent with other years, I struggle having all the administrators ranked equally individually, or not individually, but as a group. They had individual contracts, no.
Nierman?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana. The motion carries six one. And thank you, Dr. Kay, for the approbation. All right, our next section on the Agenda is the Superintendent Report, and the first item is the Freedom of Information Act Report. So, Dr. Vine, if you could review those four items with us.
Thank you. We do not have any FOIA responses that have been finalized since the Board last. We have received some FOIA requests and are meeting those requests within the legal timeframe, but that doesn't happen to have fallen before tonight.
Thank you for that information. The next item is the First Reading of Policies. So, Dr. Vine, if you could review this first reading of the Press 114 with the Board.
Thank you. And so, again, first reading, so your first chance to kind of look through these. As a reminder, the Illinois Association of School Boards has a policy service where their attorneys, they take any changes in law and make sure that our policies are up to date. Anything in green is something that IASB is suggesting be added. Anything in red, IASB is suggesting be deleted. All of the changes that they're recommending at this time are due to them helping us align with legal changes. Anything in blue, however, is something that either the Policy Committee or the administrative team is recommending. There was one question overall. They wanted to bring to the full Board's attention. So one of the first policies on here, 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. List in that policy who the district's non-discrimination coordinator or Title IX coordinator is. It is required that we have that position by law. And it also lists complaint managers. We must by law have at least two complaint managers, one who's female, one who's male. And so it lists those names. And as those change year to year, we need to go in and make sure that we've updated who those people are filling those roles. Since these policies won't be approved at the earliest until June, we know we'll have new people in roles. We're suggesting to go ahead and update those names. There was a question, so that's in 2:260. There were several other policies that also named those people, named the non-discrimination coordinator, named the complaint manager. So there was the question at the Policy Committee of, instead of renaming those in five or six other policies, and every time those people might change, having to change those, would the Board prefer that in other policies that name these and says, "Please refer back to 2:260," right? So to, you know, find out the contact information for the non-discrimination coordinator and complaint managers. I did check with the Board's attorney to make sure that we could do that. We didn't have to legally have them named in all the policies where they're named. And he said that we could do that. We could put a reference in future policies to please reference 2:260. So that is an option for the Board. I did want to share, from a superintendent perspective, I feel it's very helpful to have them listed on each of those policies. So someone may be pulling up our work harassment policy, and there are the names right there instead of, "And please refer to 2:260." Or discrimination and harassment on the basis of race, color, or national origin. Or equal employment opportunity and minority requirement. All the different ones where they exist, I feel it's helpful to see them right there, but it doesn't have to be that way. So that's something for the Board to discuss and see if you have a preference of repeating those names into the policies where they currently are or just leaving it in 2:260 and referencing in future policies. Please see 2:260 for the contact information for these positions.
Before I turn my comments to my colleagues, just a clarification question, Dr. Vine. Maybe it's instructive, maybe not. But how many other places are we talking? I just...
I can give you a rough, it's five or six.
Okay, thank you. Right, questions or comments from the Board on that?
Dr. Vine, could you remind us? At the Policy Committee, I believe the majority of the Policy Committee just felt like it's okay to leave it in the different places. Is that correct?
I'd say don't remember that we finalized that conversation.
Well, I'll echo what Dr. Vine would say. I think, you know, policies, there's so many of them that to make it as easy as possible for folks when they're accessing it, for just to have it in all the different policies that are relevant.
Other thoughts or considerations?
I think centralization is better. It's easier. Secondly, the policies would be centralized into a uniform grievance policy. It'd probably be more difficult than anywhere. So that's something to consider.
I will add my, I was at the Policy Committee, of course, but I think, you know, if you're someone not familiar with policies and you land, and as you said, Dr. Vine, in a particular place, and the reference is right there, I don't think that's a burden on the district and I think it could be a benefit to someone that needs that information. So we're looking for a consensus from the Board so we can give Dr. Vine direction. I've not got a call for the Board, but any other voices on either side of that discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
As Dr. Vine stated, that we're only talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of half a dozen policies. I don't, as I believe you said it a moment ago, I wouldn't consider that an undue burden on the Board to have to amend those policies as the positions change. So I would be in favor of including that information.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can say that whatever makes the process most user-friendly is what we should stick with. And I agree that the policy looking through can be intimidating and maybe having those names in each document would be helpful. Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
Dr. Vine, what's the risk if you have a wrong name in one policy?
What's the risk?
Yes.
Right, so what would occur is the person would contact that name in the policy and be redirected to someone else, basically. But we are required to update those, and we can update those names without Board approval, just as we know.
Okay.
At any time that doesn't require a Board vote. But, yeah, should we have a wrong name in there, then it could be a complaint from someone that says, "You told me to contact and you redirected me."
Okay, then I would agree with that. My colleague, Liz, would go towards, it's most user-friendly.
So I could bring those policies forward for a second reading, and the Board could vote on them at that time.
Good. Thank you, Board members, and thank you, Dr. Vine. Oh, any other, but any other comments or questions we need to address on those policies?
I don't think so. The Policy Committee members had something.
I thought there was one other policy we had a question. I don't have my materials in, but I can't think of it all.
We did make a slight language change, but it really was kind of a minor clarification change.
Well, and again, these will come back.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again, everyone. So we have arrived at the second Community Input section of our Agenda. If you wish to address any item on the Agenda, please complete one of the blue forms provided at the table outside and hand the form to Lana McBride. Lana, do we have anyone for the second input? All right, seeing none, we'll continue to our future Agenda items, the section of the meeting. Before I open it up to the Board for suggestions on new topics, I thought I'd take this opportunity to remind the Board of the process we established last September, and it's been a while. And so just to revisit it, this is located in our Board Protocols, and of course, I know you all can read that, but just to summarize it really briefly, is first, we agreed that we would, or remember,